Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Laura Christin. I'm a professor of economics at St. Joseph's University and I specialize in labor economics, economics of education, and data analytics. I'm also the program director of the Public Policy Program, and I will become the chair of the Economics Department in June 2022. Supporting public education is both a professional and personal passion of mine, and I've published a number of articles related to public school students' educational and labor market outcomes. I've lived in Havertown since 2014, and my child is a current student at Linwood Elementary. I began my term on the board in December 2019, and I have two years remaining for my term. I serve as the liaison for the Curriculum Committee, and I also serve on the Finance and Facilities Committee. And I will be serving as the Delaware County Community College representative for Havreford Township. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Funberg. I want to thank Bridgette for taking on the presidency and welcome our new board members. I've been on the board for 22 years. In 1999, I ran because I believed that public education is the foundation of our democracy and that our job is to create informed American citizens. And 22 years later, I believe that just as strongly. I've been very active for most of those 20-plus years in public ed advocacy work at both the regional, state, and federal levels. And I'll keep at it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. And I'm Bridgette Weedeman. I've called Havreford Township home for over 20 years, and I'm the proud mom to two daughters, one who's at Havreford High School and one who's a recent grad. In my professional life, I work at reinvestment funds, structuring, underwriting, and making loans that finance facility improvements for health and educational facilities and program expansions with organizations in communities that lack quality services. Representing Havreford, I'm engaged with PSBA, the Delco Legislative Council, and Delco School Board Leadership, and I plan to attend and enjoy all of our committee meetings. So thanks for that, everyone. I'll just take a moment to read the mission of our school district. The mission of School District of Havreford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The next agenda item is to approve the official minutes from the December 2nd, 2021, regular public school board meeting.
Move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you. We have an additional minutes to review. The action item is to approve the official minutes from the December 6th, 2021, annual board reorganization meeting.
Christin, move?
Moved.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll go next to our student reports. First up is our middle school student, Sutton Gold.
Hi, I didn't realize I wasn't giving my report earlier, so I kind of told you the first half of all about me, so you already know that. So the halfway point of the second marking period, I believe, is tomorrow. Time like flies. Everyone is ramped up for winter break. I'm going to Costa Rica for Christmas. I'm leaving at like 3 o'clock AM next week. It's my brother's last Christmas with us before we go to college, so we want to make it count. We're all in the holiday spirit. We appreciate the opportunity to be in school with our teachers and friends. Our winter sports team will begin competing this week. Our first wrestling meet is scheduled for tomorrow, and the basketball teams have their first games on Monday. The start of our winter concert season was just a few days ago. I'm in Sabbath Heaven, one of our select ensembles here at HMS, and we performed at the Flyers game on Tuesday, which was epic. We were singing such beautiful songs and people were screaming in the background, but oh, well. The sixth grade instrumental winter concert, which will include performances by the band and orchestra, will be held next week at the high school auditorium on Wednesday, December 22nd, 7 p.m. Some other bits of HMS news, the Geography Bee is happening pretty soon. There was an, I believe it was, school-wide quiz to find students who would qualify as semifinalists for the Geography Bee. I qualified. We are still pending further directions, and I think that's about it. I really want to thank the board for letting me have this epic opportunity to speak here today. I feel so honored and like important to be speaking on behalf of the bajillion kids that go to HMS. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you so much. I'd like, yeah, that deserves a round of applause. Yeah, I can see that there are some folks in the audience not wearing a mask. If you could please put the mask on so that we can continue the meeting. There are masks in the back if you need one, and if you choose not to wear a mask, then we're going to need to ask you to leave. Do we just wait? We have a lot more diversity and a lot less hair. I'm a flat soul up here, I guess, now in that category, but thank you very much, and enjoy the meeting.
Hello, my name is Dr. Latonya King. I'm a parent of three, including one, at Chestnutville Elementary. My background is psychology. I've been a therapist for over 15 years now, providing treatment to both children and adults. I'm also an undergraduate and graduate professor of psychology. I come to this board excited to work with policy, as well as the curriculum, additionally being the PSBA liaison.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Laura Christin. I'm a professor of economics at St. Joseph's University, and I specialize in labor economics, economics of education, and data analytics. I'm also the program director of the Public Policy Program, and I will become the chair of the Economics Department in June 2022. Supporting public education is both a professional and personal passion of mine, and I've published a number of articles related to public school students' educational and labor market outcomes. I've lived in Haverford since 2014, and my child is a current student at Linwood Elementary. I began my term on the board in December 2019, and I have two years remaining for my term. I serve as the liaison for the Curriculum Committee, and I also serve on the Finance and Facilities Committee. And I will be serving as the Delaware County Community College Representative for Haverford Township. Thank you.
I'm Larry Funberg. I want to thank Bridgette for taking on the presidency and welcome our new board members. I've been on the board for 22 years. In 1999, I ran because I believe that public education is the foundation of our democracy, and that our job is to create informed American citizens. And 22 years later, I believe that just as strongly. I've been very active for most of those 20-plus years in public ed advocacy work at both the regional, state, and federal levels, and I'll keep at it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. And I'm Bridgette Weedeman. I've called Haverford Township home for over 20 years, and I'm the proud mom to two daughters, one who's at Haverford High School and one who's a recent grad. In my professional life, I work at reinvestment funds, structuring, underwriting, and making loans that finance facility improvements for health and educational facilities and program expansions with organizations in communities that lack quality services. Representing Haverford, I'm engaged with PSBA, the Delco Legislative Council, and Delco School Board Leadership, and I plan to attend and enjoy all of our committee meetings. So thanks for that, everyone. I'll just take a moment to read the mission of our school district. The mission of School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The next agenda item is to approve the official minutes from the December 2nd, 2021 regular public school board meeting.
Move.
Back it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you. We have an additional minutes to review. The action item is to approve the official minutes from the December 6th, 2021 Annual Board Reorganization Meeting.
Christman, move.
Moved.
Moved and seconded?
Yeah.
Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll go next to our student reports. First up is our middle school student, Sutton Gold.
Hi, I didn't realize I wasn't giving my report earlier, so I kind of told you the first half of all about me. So you already know that. So the halfway point of the second marking period, I believe, is tomorrow. Time like flies. Everyone is ramped up for winter break. I'm going to Costa Rica for Christmas. I'm leaving at like 3 o'clock AM next week. It's my brother's last Christmas with us before we go to college, so we want to make it count. We're all in the holiday spirit. We appreciate the opportunity to be in school with our teachers and friends. Our winter sports team will begin competing this week. Our first wrestling meet is scheduled for tomorrow, and the basketball teams have their first games on Monday. The start of our winter concert season was just a few days ago. I'm in Sabbath Heaven, one of our select ensembles here at HMS, and we performed at the Flyers game on Tuesday, which was epic. We were singing such beautiful songs, and people were screaming in the background, but oh, well. The sixth-grade instrumental winter concert, which will include performances by the band and orchestra, will be held next week at the high school auditorium on Wednesday, December 22nd, 7:00 PM. Some other bits of HMS news, the Geography Bee is happening pretty soon. There was an, I believe it was, school-wide quiz to find students who would qualify as semifinalists for the Geography Bee. I qualified, and we are still pending further directions. And I think that's about it. I really want to thank the board for letting me have this epic opportunity to speak here today. I feel so honored and like important to be speaking on behalf of the bajillion kids that go to HMS. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you so much. I'd like, yeah, that deserves a round of applause. Yeah. I can see that there are some folks in the audience not wearing a mask. If you could please put the mask on so that we can continue the meeting. There are masks in the back if you need one. And if you choose not to wear a mask, then we're going to need to ask you to leave. Do we just wait?
What's the purpose of this?
Thank you. The meeting is available on livestream on our YouTube. Thank you. Our next agenda item is our student report from Mia Dewald, our high school representative.
Hello, all. My name is Mia Dewald, and I am a junior at Haverford High. Hi, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak about the recent happenings at Haverford High School once again tonight. Students are pushing through the second quarter and continuing to having the wonderful grades to show it. Haverford has just held another SAT, and students are preparing for the annual keystone to be held the week of January 4th upon returning from winter break. The National Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, and the Business National Honor Society have all held their induction ceremonies this past week, which were all wildly successful. Winter athletics have begun, and the boys' and girls' basketball had some very special visitors last week in their game against the Haverford Police Department. The Haverford hockey team continues to impress as they start off their season to a stellar first few games. Girls' basketball won their tip-off tournament, beating state finalist Springfield Ann Bonner Prendy. Kicking off the winning weights for the Fords, Ethan Fingerhut was named Cross-Country Delco Runner of the Year by the Delco Times. This is the third Haverford runner in the last 15 years to receive this prestigious honor, excuse me. Following, Sean Boyle was named Boy Soccer Player of the Year yesterday. What an honor for those players and the athletics teams. The Haverford Choral Department has already started preparing for their annual singing Valentine performances. On behalf of all the Haverford students, we cannot wait to see what they come up with. Personally, it's one of my favorite parts of the year. The band and orchestra held a wonderful winter concert last night with fantastic renditions of both Sabre and Spurs and Star Wars. As an orchestra member myself, it was so nice to be playing in front of a live audience. Haikyu started their rival Garnet Valley competition yesterday, and esports will be at Garnet Valley tomorrow to play in a tournament for the first live esports tournament in HHS history. Haverford's chapter of the National Honor Society is currently collecting gifts for our annual holiday gift drive. We appreciate our community's continued generosity during these holiday seasons. In other exciting news, the Future Business Leaders of America will be hosting a dodgeball tournament to be held on the 22nd as a final fun school activity before break. All proceeds from the tournament will be going to the Feeding Pennsylvania Project. As the days of December fly by and the countdown to winter break begins, the students are all continuing to work hard, both in the classroom and in extracurriculars. Lastly, we thank the board for making December 23rd a half-day of school. Thank you. Thank you again for your time, and I look forward to seeing you all in 2022. Go Fords!
Thank you. We are now at the first public comment portion of the meeting, where we have 13 people signed up to comment on items that are on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board, and given the number, we will stick strictly to the three minutes, so you'll be asked to conclude your remarks. First speaker is Jenny England.
Hi, my name is Jenny. I reside in the district. I've reached out to the district and school board several times. It's probably more accurate to say many, many times in the last two years in response to COVID-related decisions that were being made. Tonight is my first time standing here in front of you. I'm grateful and relieved that we're going to be discussing optional masking in this district. As a parent, I'm very worried about the unknown effects of masking children, especially young children, and the effects that this is having on their development. I'm worried about their developing reading skills. I'm worried about their social skills. I'm worried about their verbal and nonverbal communication skills. I'm worried that we don't know the answers to these questions, and we're making decisions that we're going to regret later. At the start of the school year, although I very much wanted optional masking, I understood the reasons why the board chose and the district chose to mask. And I have to be honest, despite the fact that I would rather not admit this, I do agree with it. Kids need to be in school, and it was clear that masking allowed for kids to remain in school. It allowed us to not quarantine close contacts. But we have a vaccine now. It's available for all school-aged children, and despite the climbing case counts, we know that this vaccine is effective at preventing symptomatic illness. We also know that what the researchers looked at was not to prevent COVID-19. It was to prevent symptomatic illness. That was what they looked at. That was what their study looked at. It never looked at prevention. And we know that this vaccine prevents symptomatic illness in both Delta and Omicron variants. This is huge, and it shouldn't be overlooked. With the availability of vaccination, I support and ask that the board support optional masking, regardless of case count in our district. There are other districts that are currently mask optional in Delaware County and Bucks County and Chester County, and the transmission rates in all three of those counties are virtually identical, with the exception of maybe 50 cases. The last thing that I will say is a quote from Dr. Jeffrey Gerber. He's the Associate Director for Inpatient Research Activities for the Center for Pediatric Clinical Effectiveness at CHOP, and he co-authored CHOP's Policy Lab's guidance for in-person education in grades in the K-12 educational setting. I thought hard about what I wanted to say tonight, and in the end, I felt that his words from the Policy Lab blog on December 9th were perfect. So I will quote exactly. Throughout the pandemic, children have been asked to shoulder a tremendous burden. To reduce substantial impacts across our communities, concerns about mental health and the impacts of prolonged periods of restrictions are increasingly important and should not be overshadowed by a role of minimizing COVID-19 impacts to adults who have made their own choice about vaccination and personal routines. Transitioning back to pre-pandemic ways of life can feel uncomfortable. I'm almost finished. But it is a necessary part of our collective recovery. It's also been, it's also a recognition that we'll enter a new phase of this pandemic in the new year, one of recovery and moving towards the conclusion of a pandemic that will never fully recede, but whose impacts we must accommodate to over time in the course of our normal lives. Thank you.
The next speaker is Todd Hall.
Good evening, Todd Hall. I reside in Haverford Township. It was stated at the last meeting that the district has the authority to require masks based on Title 24 of Pennsylvania Code. We were advised the board, quote, "may adopt and enforce," and then there was an ellipsis, "a truncation or a removal of the word," followed by reasonable rules and regulations, as it may deem necessary regarding the management of its school affairs. So what word is removed? The word that was removed was "such," and what is "such" a reference to? It's a reference to the title of the code just above it, Rules, Regulations, Safety Patrols. The text later goes to mention details regarding how to promote the safe crossing of children on roadways surrounding the school. It went into a lot of text about the nature of how reflective this needs to be, things of those details. It was about pedestrian safety. It wasn't written about the ability for a school district to order broad, significant alterations to how children express themselves or breathe during the day. It's not speaking about the management of health and safety of children, staff, nor volunteers at the school. In the review of this, we'll take a look, too, at the text "reasonable rules." Should someone interpret that this section does give broader authority? The following is evidence that this wrongful act is not reasonable, not just, and it's not good judgment, and it's harming our children. First, you're asking our children to put a synthetic fabric on their face for hours on end during the day. They will breathe these fabrics into their lungs. And it's many hours a day. These aren't people sitting at a desk in an office building that they can take it off when they're apart from others. They have to wear them all day. Secondly, up to 70% of communication is nonverbal. The majority of nonverbal communication comes from facial expressions. A mask is severely limiting our children's communication. Third, I received my child's social and emotional learning newsletter, and I agree, there are some good things being taught in this curriculum. And there was a link to a resource, number 13, Ways to Raise a Caring and Compassionate Child. Item four, coach your child to pay attention to people's facial expressions. Where do our children see people during the day? They see it then at school. Your goal of social and emotional wellness is impeded by this wrongful order. And then we have personnel in the school hallways telling kids to mask up and spending their time enforcing this rule. Every time you spend time on something else, it's not tantamount to other things, such as affirming kids, encouraging kids, checking out threats in a school bathroom as they're going on, perhaps, keeping out an eye for bullying. And finally, we'll hear much in this meeting, I'm sure, about case counts, the proximity of students to others, mitigation. We heard comments from the board in the last meeting that basically has turned this into a litmus test of whether you care for others or not. I don't think we'll hear anything about severe hospitalizations or deaths in any context. I'm thankful there have not been severe hospitalizations or deaths to the district, to my knowledge. I'm beyond puzzled why this important medical issue is never, ever discussed, severe hospitalizations or deaths.
Your three minutes are up.
Yes, S E R funds are not dependent also on receiving, having universal masking. It's mentioned, but it is not required.
Mr. Hall, thank you.
I empathize for you all in your field, but put some facts in place with it and end this immediately. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Johnson.
Good evening. I reside in the township. Mr. Dodds, I'm happy that you are here this evening. After this Supreme Court ruling, I wanted to publicly ask you some legal questions. At the last school board meeting, Dr. Ruscie included in her presentation that the district had the legal authority to mandate masking based on the PA School Code that states the board may adopt and enforce reasonable rules and regulations as it may deem necessary and proper regarding management of its school affairs. It is my understanding that Mr. Dodds, a solicitor contracted by the board and employed by the firm Weisler Perlstein, has communicated in private conversations with the board that School Code 24, Section 5-510, gives the Haverford School Board legal authority to mandate masking. It is my understanding that you feel confident that the Rules and Regulations School Code is legally sound against the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which gives students a right to an equal education. Is that correct, Mr. Dodds? The reason I'm asking this is, the reason I'm questioning this is because local districts like Springfield and Marco Newtown have voted to make masks optional in the coming weeks. So how will you argue this is a reasonable regulation that is necessary for one group, the students of Haverford, when the evidence confirms it's not necessary for students sitting in a classroom 10 minutes away? Dr. Ruscie, this matter is supposed to be talked about publicly, and we have a right to know. You are going to waste taxpayer money on lawsuits while you continue to hurt our kids, both physically and mentally, with your continued mask mandates, which are based on recommendations, not requirements. As Dr. Rubin said, you need an exit strategy. It's time. Dr. Ruscie, I feel for you because the board cannot come up with an exit strategy. For almost two years, it's been almost two years, and they're still asking very basic questions. And I'm not including the new board members in this because I know we haven't heard from you. And clearly lack any real understanding of the science, which is okay. The board members are not public health officials. This is a decision that needs to be left up to the parents. Please, I'm begging you to stop force masking our kids. Stop restricting their breathing. Stop impeding their development. It's enough. It's time to finally do the right thing for these kids. Please remember, you are not health officials. I know I speak for others in this room tonight when I request that you get back to educating our kids. For the past year, the focus has been on plexiglass and keeping kids six feet apart and quarantining healthy children. Children are losing their constitutional right to an education. I understand that in the beginning, you had no choice, but now you do have a choice. If you want to wait around till the CDC gives you the green light, it will be years down the road, and the kids will be developmentally delayed at that point, especially the young kids. Dr. Ruscie, you know this is not right, and if Mr. Dodds is telling you that this is legally sound, you really need to get a second legal opinion. The Supreme Court disagrees. Thank you.
Next speaker is Meredith Mercantante.
Hi, good evening. My name is Meredith Mercantante. I'm a resident of Haverford Township. I'd like to take the time to address the board about the current ventilation in our school buildings and how it pertains to the Health and Safety Plan. Ventilation will be the key to returning our children to normalcy. COVID-19 is not going away ever, nor will respiratory viruses. Life has inherent risks, and we need to be thinking longer term. Now is the time for endemic discussions and vaccine availability and lifting of the state mask mandate. Let's make changes to our Health and Safety Plan that shift the burden away from our children and onto the schools' buildings with better ventilation. Studies show that ventilation is consistently ranked as the most important pandemic and COVID classroom safety concern of parents nationwide, and yet we haven't heard much or any talk about it at school board meetings. Inside our schools, the main focus is only on masking and distancing, which puts all the burden on children and staff. Ventilation is an equitable and science-backed long-term solution to this endemic, unlike cloth masking. Masking has very limited mitigation value, especially worn by young children who do not ever have properly fitting masks and is no longer legally required by Pennsylvania schools. Dr. Joseph Allen with the Harvard School of Public Health thinks, beginning January 1st, 2022, schools should rely on ventilation and air filtration, as well as vaccines for adults, continued encouragement of childhood vaccination, and the use of rapid antigen testing. To quote Dr. Allen, he says, "I've been a big proponent of mask-wearing for a long time, but over a year at this point in the pandemic, it no longer makes sense to me." As you are aware, currently, the district's buildings are not equitable and not equally ventilated. However, it is stated on Page 2 of your Health and Safety Plan that the district is required to improve ventilation in order to receive ESSER funding, per Item D, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation. Most importantly, the board and the public need to be aware that ESSER funds can and should be used for improving ventilation. Ventilation is a much-needed lifeline for the children of this district. In classrooms lacking fresh air intake or HVAC ductwork that can manually exchange the air, the CDC recommends portable systems. The CDC says schools should use air cleaners that use HEPA filters to enhance air cleaning whenever possible, as well as ultraviolet germicidal irradiation as a supplemental treatment to inactivate the virus, especially if options for increasing ventilation and filtration are limited. Many other larger districts such as Philadelphia have consulted with experts, published transparent information on their website about the status of their school buildings. Other districts are doing the same. During the 2020-21 school year, Lower Marion increased the levels of ventilation and filtration in its existing systems, including the installation of MERV-13 and HEPA filters. Bipolar ionization technology is utilized in large-group areas. Testing of air quality is conducted routinely with carbon dioxide alarms, which are an inexpensive and easy way to monitor air exchange. Lower Marion does not rely on the opening of windows to ensure air quality as it allows for intake of unfiltered air, exposing staff and students with asthma and allergies to allergens and other particulates. Instead, they ensure classroom air quality through the HVAC system. Thank you.
The next speaker is Helene Conroy.
Good evening. My name is Helene Conroy Smith. I'm a Haverford resident. I'm here today because the PA Code states that school boards can implement measures as it may deem necessary and proper. Has any school district provided facts and data substantiating necessity and properness of a masking order? Have school districts been able to rationally explain how they can deem it necessary and proper to mandate masks despite the fact that millions of students worldwide are attending classes safely without mask mandates? How can a regulation be considered necessary for one group when the evidence confirms it's not necessary for similar-situated students? It cannot. The adoption and enforcement of these rules and regulations being implemented by the school district goes against the PA Commonwealth Court. The Commonwealth Court judge stated, "As an administrative agency's interpretation of the statute, it is charged to administer its energy to difference and impertinent review, absent fraud, bad faith, abuse of discretion, or clearly arbitrary action. Interpretations of an ordinance that are entitled with deference become of controlling weight unless they are peonies, erroneously, or inconsistent with the ordinance." We had a lot of inconsistencies here in Delco. However, when an administration agency's interpretation is inconsistent with the statute itself, which it is, or when the statute is ambiguous, I'm sorry, unambiguous... or when the statute is ambiguous, I'm sorry, unambiguous, such as administrative interpretation carries little weight, I think it's important for you to review the orders that you are carrying out because they have little weight at this time. I desire to add that the school board is allowing the school district to work outside its purview by permitting the school district administrators to create and enforce rules prior to public vote, which has happened by principals at Menela, as well as Chestnut World, sending out information to parents that they must be vaccinated or coming with a negative COVID test. The school board is responsible for us, to the taxpayers. And Mr. Dodds, I'm going to ask you as well. I think you need to review this, and I think we need a second opinion here in the school district. Thank you.
The next speaker is Erica Johnson.
Hi. Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please state your name.
Erica Johnson, resident of Haverford Township. So, public pressure has been mounting on school boards for some time now. Public comment has increased. More parents have more concerns. More members of the community are voicing concerns. We have strong feelings about things we hold dear to us, our children, their education, their safety, the community we live in, and how our hard-earned dollars are being spent. It is important for the public to be heard. Public comments should weigh on your decisions. The ESER Health and Safety Guidance states that you must take into account public comment related to the development of and subsequent revisions to the plan, which is happening tonight. Globally, countries are grappling with translating the evidence of public mask wearing to their context. There is a lot of information to sift through. Peer-reviewed studies are there for mask wearing and controlling droplets, mainly for upper respiratory infections, not necessarily for COVID. In turn, there are no peer-reviewed studies on masking children leading to unintended harm, risk compensation, sociological considerations. All advice regarding that is anecdotal. The science and the facts are not there. This should be considered. If our children must remain masked for you to receive your funding, please consider regular mask breaks throughout the day. Normalize seeing faces, expressions, and smiles. Many doctors are concerned of what long-term effects COVID may have. I don't hear equal concern about long-term effects of extended mask wearing for children. There's a balance between the public health law and individual rights. Public health law is not to infringe on people's rights, but provide guidance. These rights should allow parents to choose what's right for their families. Oh, where's my last paper? Okay, sorry. I'll empathize with you, the board. I know you are thinking of the health and safety of all. There's not a one-size-fits-all. It's never worked. I believe it's time to start leaving some of the decisions regarding health and safety to the parents. After all, we know what's best for our kids. On that note, I know firsthand that there are teachers in the district discussing vaccination status with children in school. This should be off limits. Another discussion for home with parents and their children. Thank you.
Next speaker is Courtney Rostand.
Good evening, my name's Courtney Rostand, and I'm a resident of Haverford Township. I've lived here for over a decade, and I'm raising my three children here. I'm here tonight to advocate for optional masking within Haverford School District. Over the past 18 months, a lot of progress has been made in our fight against COVID-19. Currently, 72% of Delaware County residents have had at least one dose of the vaccine. All school-aged children are eligible for a vaccine. Boosters are available. Post-infection therapeutic and monoclonal antibody treatments are also available. I won't belabor the data on COVID risk to children because I know you know it's low, except to point out that CDC data shows that elementary-age children had higher risk over the last 12 months of dying from, in order, accidents, malignant neoplasms, congenital abnormalities, homicide, diseases of the heart, chronic lower respiratory diseases, influenza and pneumonia, and suicide. The reality is that COVID mitigation measures implemented by schools are having a negative impact on learning and the social and emotional well-being of children. I am tired of hearing, the kids don't mind, that there's no impact on their learning or socialization, that they are resilient. These children have no power over what has been asked of them for the past 20 months. Can you really think that when the entire lower portion of a child's face is covered and their breathing is obstructed for 35 hours a week, that there is no impact? A recent Brown University study would disagree. They found that face masks and other social distancing measures do impede children's development. Their analysis showed a marked decrease averaging 23% in verbal and nonverbal and overall cognitive scores, with pronounced deficiencies in males and those from socio-economically disadvantaged homes. Arguably, even more important is the impact on social and emotional wellness. Last week, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory stating, quote, "It would be a tragedy if we beat back one public health crisis only to allow another to grow in its place," referring to the exacerbation COVID and its related health and safety measures have had on kids, already declining mental health. And as Todd mentioned, I recently received a counselor's connection note, which was great. It talked about a way to raise kind kids, teaching them to pay attention to people's facial expressions. Now, surely, we've made good strides in returning the kids to more normal status, and I applaud everyone for their efforts. But there's still more to do. There's still masks, there's still distance. They still don't know, they're not able to share a knowing look with a friend or a warm, welcoming smile from a teacher or someone that they don't know if they're new to a class. My children ate lunch from their lap in an auditorium, all fall. They have no indoor access to a gymnasium. There are no holiday concerts. My daughter's learning French horn through a slit in a mask. We're Chatham Park Bulldogs, and our motto is "Be brave, not perfect." And I think, as you assess the health and safety tonight and going forward into January, I beg you to be brave. Don't try to be perfect, just try, because the kids need you. Thank you.
We are about halfway through public comment. The next speaker is Christina Master.
Thank you, I'm Dr. Christina Master. I live in Haverford. I'm a pediatric sports medicine specialist and also an academic general pediatrician. I've been in practice for the last 29 years at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Rucci and the Board of, the School Board, for their leadership in directing masking as a common-sense intervention that has kept our kids in school to date. I am so thrilled that I live in a district that leads and does not follow. Instituting masking in the summer before the governor's mandate showed leadership, and continuing that masking currently continues to show leadership. We are not going to require masks forever, but this is not the time to eliminate masks as we are headed into upper respiratory viral season, where all of our hospitals, including the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, is overflowing with patients who are sick. If we have increases in COVID, your child will not be able to have elective surgery or other procedures done. I applaud the Board of Directors at Haverford School District for your leadership, and I thank you for that.
The next speaker is Angela Urso.
Good evening, Angela Urso. I reside in Haverford Township. I'm here to speak about the masking of our children, especially the effect on their mental health. I believe it was Dr. Crispin who said, who asked two meetings ago, what the mental health effects of masking were on children, and I really appreciated that question. It's valid, it's real, and I'm glad we're finally talking about it. Wearing face masks increases social anxiety, something many kids continue to struggle with after being isolated for so long. Masks are serving as a type of concealment strategy that enables the kids to hide and not show their self-perceived flaws. Children have learned to hide behind them so peers can't see their emotions during developmentally significant ages. Masks make it a challenge to make friends, which directly impacts their self-perception. In addition to that, masks change the way you look, which can lead to a negative body image. Wearing face masks makes emotional displays harder to interpret, which leads to a negative effect on social bonds with other children and teachers. Masks do not allow children to display or learn how to display empathy, which I think we can all agree is one of the most important things for our children to learn. Masks make some children feel anxious and panicky, or like they can't breathe. Masks make some kids feel dizzy and sick and get really bad headaches. Masks interfere with some children's vision. Masks make some children feel trapped or claustrophobic. Masks make some children feel scared of others. Masks have the ability to trigger a traumatic event in some kids. Masks make some kids feel confused and not sure how to act when wearing a mask. Masks make it harder to recognize positive emotions, making it less likely for children to perceive positive emotions in others. And the research is pretty clear. We've had many people give public comment on it, and I think our numbers reflect that they don't work. These kids are struggling for no reason. Our children are in despair. They think the air we breathe is toxic. They are living through trauma. It's been too long. Enough is enough, our kids deserve better. You are causing harm, not good, by keeping them in masks all day. So please, stop making our children conform. Please, I beg you, to consider mask optional. I think all the public speakers here tonight so far, you know, have given great, great reasons why you should look, you know, look to that option. Thank you, guys.
The next speaker is Joel Smith.
My name is Joel Smith. I live in Haverford Township. My comments are about the statements made at the last December 2nd school board meeting, specifically the district's authority to require masks. There was a slide with two bullets. The first said the board may adopt and enforce... reasonable rules and regulations as it may deem necessary and proper regarding the management of its school affairs and reference Public School Code, Section 510, which lacks considerable context. Section 510, Rules and Regulations, Safety Patrols. The Board of School Directors in any school district may adopt and enforce such reasonable rules and regulations as it may deem necessary and proper regarding the management of its school affairs and the conduct and deportment of all superintendents, teachers, and the school teachers and other appointees or employees during the time that they are engaged in their duties to the district, as well as regarding the conduct and deportment of all pupils attending the school district, public school in the district during such times as they are under the supervision of the Board of School Directors, the teachers, including the time necessarily spent in coming to and returning from school. This sentence, as long as it is, is establishing the responsibility of the board for safety in school, including travel to and from school, so that the next paragraphs about safety patrols have context. Section 510 continues, "In the exercise of this authority, the Board of School Directors is empowered to organize school safety patrols and, with the permission of the parents, to appoint pupils as members thereof," and then goes on to describe "the objectives of the safety patrols to help with traffic crossing." Section 510 in its entirety is to enable the creation of safety patrols, and the first sentence shouldn't be used out of context as a blank check to make up rules. The second bullet was about ESER funding and said, "To receive ESER funding under the American Rescue Plan, we must have a health and safety plan that explains how the district will maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and other staff in schools, including universal and correct, or correct wearing of masks." The ESER application states, "The local education agency plan must address the extent to which it is adopted policies and a description of any policies on each of the CDC's recommendations, not requirements, not mandates, on universal and correct wearing of masking, modifying facilities to allow for physical distancing, handwashing, and respiratory etiquette, and so on." The plan must address the extent to which it has adopted policies. My suggestion, if funding is the most important thing here, is to update the health and safety plan to state "The extent to which we are adopting the CDC's recommendation regarding masking is that they will be optional. You get to keep your funding, and our kids get to take off the masks." I hope you vote to change the health and safety plan to make masks optional regardless of other metrics or data points because you don't have any authority to require them.
The next speaker is Melissa Raffel.
Hi there. My name's Melissa Raffel. I reside in Haverford Township. Thank you to the board, Dr. Rucci, welcome to board members. I'm here in support of the mask mandate. My family, like many, have worked to keep ourselves in the community safe during the pandemic. We've relied on others to do the same because we recognize that our actions don't just impact ourselves, they impact those around us. Masking protects not just the wearer, but everyone around them. Our son is now fully vaccinated, which is so exciting. And we should, by all accounts, be saying no more mask mandates because we're protected. But we recognize that families in our schools may have younger children at home who can't get vaccinated yet, or older relatives, or folks who are immunocompromised. The vaccine provides a tremendous amount of protection, but we know that breakthrough cases can happen, and vaccinated people can transmit COVID. Until our community transmission is lower and more people are vaccinated, my family is willing to continue to mask in environments where we know there are at-risk people. And we know that this sends a strong message to our son about the importance of caring for others. As a new family to Haver Town, we were drawn to what we understood to be a strong sense of community. That includes taking care of others, even though it may be mildly inconvenient to ourselves. I'm asking my community to think about how your actions impact others and what it sends to your children. To the board, I ask that you continue to require masks for staff, visitors, and children in our schools. Thank you.
The final speaker in this section of public comment is Maggie Ledbetter. Is she in attendance? No, okay. The next item of the agenda is the Finance and Facilities Committee report, which I will give. We met on December 9th. Ken Matthews from C B Development presented on three of the four agenda items. First concerned Linwood and the additional safety fencing around the front wall and the signage on the side of the building. The initial pricing that they received came in considerably higher than estimated, which may necessitate a rebid of that work. He then provided an update on the status of the budget for projects at Linwood and high school projects, phases 1 and 2. The new Linwood school had a budget of $34.1 million. Now, complete and open, less than 4% of the budget, $1.3 million, remains to be invoiced by the contractors. When all of the billing is complete, $754,000 of contingency is expected to be unused, reflecting a savings of 2%. The high school Phase 1 addition of classroom wing had a budget of $10.1 million. There is only $153,000 remaining to be invoiced, and the project will come in just under budget with $48,000 of savings. The high school Phase 2 for the expanded music and fitness spaces is just getting started. The project has a budget of $9.8 million, and there's still 80% or $7.9 million to be billed for work that will continue through the summer to finish the addition for the start of the school year. Any savings realized in these projects will be rolled over as funds available for the HVAC and roofing projects that we have on deck for Cooper Town and Chatham Park, and will reduce the amount that the district ultimately needs to borrow for these capital projects. A third item was to review the bids received on Cooper Town and Chatham Park, their HVAC projects. The bids were favorable and came in well underestimates. There were a variety of low bidders for both of the projects, which which helps to alleviate scheduling concerns for the summer's work, but all were firms that the district and CB Development have had positive experience with. Following the meeting, CB Development provided an update to the bid results that was even more favorable than what had been presented. The Chatham Park project with two ad alternates will cost $5.3 million compared to the estimate of $6.9. And the Cooper Town project is the bid with the HVAC. The roof bids are still coming in in January. So based on the HVAC bids and holding a $2 million estimate for the roof, the project cost is coming in at $7.2 million versus its estimate of over $7.8 million. So together, the total for these two projects is now $12.5 million, a $2 million savings compared to the $14.5 million estimate. And Ken Matthews is here tonight to present, this is on the agenda, for the acceptance of those HVAC bids. The final agenda item related to the Act 1 index and our budget for next year. The Act 1 index established by Pennsylvania for the 2022-23 school year is 3.4% and is based on inflation tied to statewide wages and employment costs. Act 1, which has been in place since 2006, limits districts' tax increases to the index unless a higher increase is approved by voters in a referendum. Act 1 allows districts to adopt a resolution that we will not raise taxes in excess of the index, which again this year is 3.4%. And our business director, Ms. Martha Q., recommended that we adopt such a resolution. It should be noted that the budget has not been prepared, and neither has an amount of tax increase been discussed, only that the recommendation is to have it be within that Act 1 index, which the committee is in favor of. We also noted that the index at 3.4% is the highest amount in the last 10 years, over which time it has ranged from 1.7% to 2.6%. The meeting only lasted 30 minutes, but you can tell that we covered a lot, and the recording of the meeting should be available on the district website. The next item of the agenda is the superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Sweden. The majority of my remarks this evening will be about the Health and Safety Plan, which appears a little bit further down on the agenda after Mr. Matthews talks about the construction project updates. But I do want to just thank the community once again for their volunteerism. The vaccination clinic that was held at Linwood Elementary on Saturday, there were 1,200 people who were vaccinated on Saturday. And that was only possible through the number of volunteers that came from the community. And there were volunteers in the room that day who have children in our school systems, and there were volunteers in the room that day who are residents of the township, who do not have children in our system, but they were medical professionals who could help administer the shots throughout the day. So we had 500 additional people come through on Saturday than we had at the clinic on November 20th, I think that date was. And we had fewer volunteers on Saturday, yet we were still able to process that many people in the same amount of time. The pharmacist from Springfield Pharmacy couldn't say enough about this community and its dedication and volunteerism and the way people, once they saw that we were shorthanded, made attempts to stay even longer throughout the day. So I just want to relay her gratitude and express our gratitude as well to all the members of the community who participated in both of those days. And now, Mr. Matthews will turn it over to you for the construction project update, and when he has concluded, I will talk about our Health and Safety Plan.
Great, thank you. So for Linwood, the current status of everything is we're down to just the last handful of items. Punch list items, some cleanup, some things that will get taken care of over the holiday break. There are some things that have to come back. They'll have to come back in the spring. A little bit of line striping, some seeding, kind of clean some of those things up. So we're close to being closed out, and we'll continue that process here over the next few months. For the high school, the Phase 1 classroom addition is pretty much wrapped up. Those punch list items, there's very, very few left. We do have one thing to take care of with some handrail repairs over the holiday break. So we'll take care of that, and then we're essentially done with Phase 1. Phase 2 is moving along very well. Right now, the foundations are, they should be completed over this next week. Steel is pretty much fabricated already, which is honestly a lot quicker than we anticipated, which is great news, of course. So steel will start being erected basically in the beginning of January. So that's all great news. Material supply chain issues, there's been one or two, but we've been able to work around them. So we're confident that everything should be showing up on time, which is good. Then, as Bridget mentioned earlier, we move into... Did I hit the wrong button? Sorry. So as discussed, we presented last week. My apologies, I made an embarrassing math error here, but they're highlighted in yellow. This is what was presented at the last meeting. We issued a correction memo to that. So here are the proper results for all the bids. As Bridget mentioned, they came in very favorably. What was on the left was presented as a budget in November. The right side is what the actual bids came in at, which is very good news. You can see the revised, including soft costs, is $5.1 million. There were two alternates for Chatham Park. Recommend accepting them both, which gets you to the $5.2 million for Chatham. The same fashion, the bids for Cooper Town came in very favorably. On the right side, you can see the total is $7.1 million, which includes a $2 million estimate for the roof project, which is currently out to bid, actually as of yesterday. Bids are due January 6th. We'll come back to the Facilities Committee in mid-January and with the hopes that the bids come in favorably. And then we'd be presenting them to you all for formal approval to proceed. And this is just Phase 1 of the roof replacement that would be done this summer, which is essentially the 1990 wing. And then we would go out to bid later next year for the second phase to be bid to do the original building and replace the roof on that. So all, you know, great results. Any questions on any of the projects from the board?
I have a question, because I think, did you say that you recommend both alternates for Chatham Park? Just because my document says just the one.
So that's, I, that was the mistake I made on the math. I flipped two bidders, so this is, we're recommending move forward fixing the crawl space piping for the $46,000.
I'm just working out from an old document. Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Okay, thanks.
Your mistake was to our advantage. Like what we got was better numbers in the second version, so we're not going to indict you too much for that one.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. Moving along. Tonight's discussion is a continuation of the discussion that we initiated at the last board meeting as the board considers changes to the Health and Safety Plan and specifically some of the questions that came up around masking. And we hope to continue that at the January meeting. And once again, you know, try to find out tonight, what information can the administration provide to address the questions that the board has. Just for, as a reminder, you know, the language. So some of what you're going to see tonight is similar to what we had on the screen at the last meeting. On those slides, we'll go through, try to go through a little more quickly than some of the others. This is just a reminder that the language that's currently in our Health and Safety Plan and that it links, our current plan links masking to county transmission levels. The, in our recent plan, masks are required on school buses as per the Fed. You know, that's a federal order, so whatever would happen with that. Our current plan states that individuals who are not fully vaccinated should wear a mask when indoors. And the CDC, their current recommendation is that it's for everyone, regardless of vaccination status. So that's sort of the summary piece. Just a reminder, or maybe even clarification for us to be mindful of, regardless of the decision around masking, there are times that masks will be required if we were to move to optional masking. If a vaccinated individual is identified as a close contact, the mask would be required. They don't have to test. In some of our schools, that seems to be a question coming up. If you're vaccinated and you're identified as a close contact, then you would be expected to wear the mask for 10 or 14 days, whatever that number is. But there's no testing. Testing is completely optional on your part. People who are participating in tests to stay. So if they're participating in tests to stay, they tend to be unvaccinated. The mask would be required. And then they have to test three times after that contact. There was a question about whether tests to stay would be linked to wearing masks. We are not participating in the state's test-to-stay program. The test-to-stay program we participate in is through CHOP. And masking is not a requirement in order for us to participate in this test-to-stay program. I want to be clear, however. Once you, once an individual has been identified as a close contact and they indicate that they want tests to stay, they do need to wear a mask during that time. It does not, that's when it's required. It does not mean that we have to have universal masking throughout the building in order to be a participant in CHOP's test-to-state program. And as I mentioned before, anyone on district buses is required to wear those. As we all know, after last Friday's ruling by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, there currently is no state mandate. And without additional action from the state, the decision on masks rests with local school boards. Section 510 of the school code grants school boards the authority to adopt and enforce such reasonable rules and regulations. There's a lot to that section in there as it may deem necessary and proper regarding the management of its schools. After your questions, we have reviewed this again with our solicitor and comfortably believe that this authority includes adopting rules such as a decision on masking related to COVID mitigation measures. So that takes us to what were the options that we had looked at last two weeks ago and what were some of the questions that came up. Of course, one option is to just, you know, maintain the current plan. And in summary, for individuals, that is, our current plan is based on county-level data. At that time, it was and still is for right now. All that is available to us as a school district when we are in substantial to high transmission, that the district would require masks of all of the students. Second option that we laid out for the board was to revise the current plan that masking would be optional when local and township data would be in moderate or low. At that time, I had shared that in a conversation with Dr. Brennan, I had his permission to indicate that the Delaware County Board of Health, that they will in fact have access to county data and that they've already had started to look at how to create that specific data. In a conversation as recent as this week, the epidemiologist who has been hired by Delaware County is already in contact with Chester County, looking at how Chester County produces that information for the districts that are part of Chester County. So we do know that progress has been made to get that data to have it at the county level, have it at a local level for us. Option 3 then was to look at, you know, revising the current plan. Masking becomes optional. And then end of January, beginning of February, we look at a timeframe. So some of the updates that we have here, all persons five years of age and older will have had sufficient time to be fully vaccinated by then. We were asked to look at the vaccination rates of students and staff. Over 90% of our staff are vaccinated. We will begin next week to collect on a voluntary basis. We are not mandating. We will collect on a voluntary basis if anyone is willing to share with us that student vaccine data. I can say, after having spent some time in one of our buildings earlier this week participating in the contact tracing and working with the staff there, that it will be particularly helpful if we are dealing with a large number of children who have been identified as a close contact to be able to have access, knowing that we can get that, knowing that the child has been vaccinated. A lot of the, I don't want to say difficult, the time that we had to have children waiting in order to return them to a classroom was if we were trying to reach a parent who wasn't available at that time. And for many good reasons, not available at that time. So some of the children were waiting a long time for us to be able to say, you know what, you can go to your classroom. So I will encourage people from that logistical perspective to share the information with us. But I want to be very clear. We're not mandating, and we're not mandating that people share the information. We'll communicate next week how people can start to, you know, how they can start to do that. The... What's going on now? So when we look at some of these considerations for making masks optional, you know, as we've always said, our goal remains for keeping students open, keeping schools open. We're not debating the seriousness of the illness. It's more serious for others than it is for some. That's not what I'm here to debate about. I'm not going to have that conversation. I'm going to look at what are the implications for when we would potentially have to communicate with the Department of Health and get their guidance around case outbreaks and what that could mean for us. So I just want people to have the facts. I want people to know what our options are. Moving to mask optional. Of course, there's going to be a potential for an increase in positive cases if the community transmission is substantial or high. If an individual is unmasked, those who are unvaccinated and within six feet for 15 or more minutes of someone who is COVID-positive will be required to either quarantine or participate in tests to stay. I've already shared with you, 90% of our staff are vaccinated. So if that could be potentially in one day for us, it could be, you know, 10% of the staff. We would be looking at either quarantine or test to stay. If we have the similar numbers for students, we would have an idea of what that potential could be from there. This is the piece that we've not really talked a lot about. And that is the Pennsylvania Department of Health, the influence, where they will start to get involved or where they will want to speak with people in the district. If 5% of the students or staff are confirmed within a 14-day window or three simultaneous classroom or core group outbreaks when contact tracing cannot adequately identify the contacts or other mitigation strategies such as the physical distancing or universal masking are not being implemented. This is the information. I'm not using it as a scare tactic. This is a fact. There are high percentages. I mean, you know, 5% of the, and that's combined, student and staff. So if you took the middle school and you've got 1,600 students in here and another 150 staff members, it's pretty easy to think that would take a lot for us to have to talk with the Pennsylvania Department of Health and see what they would potentially be recommending to us. And their potential recommend would be a maximum 14-day suspension of learning. That's not, I'm not saying that we would be looking at two weeks of closing our schools. That's not it, not it at all. But there is the reality of looking at the numbers and being in touch with the Pennsylvania Department and being in touch with the Pennsylvania Department of Health when numbers would become high. Do we know if they're going to become high? That we would have to say, what is our tolerance for taking that risk? The potential impact upon the unvaccinated. So we anticipate that there would be an increase in those identified as a close contact then. If you are unvaccinated, then you would have to do tests to stay, as we mentioned earlier, or quarantine. And we talked before that we know that there's a substitute shortage and the potential impact that that could have. Masks will be required for some and optional for others. And the question was, how would we monitor that? Who would monitor that? We'll do the best that we can. But we're not going to be at a point where we're going to have teachers in every single class identifying who's wearing a mask as an option and who's wearing a mask as part of tests to stay and who takes the mask off during... We're going to do the best that we can do with that because masking would be optional. Our current health and safety plan states that we will limit visitors into the building. One of the revisions that we are seeking to that is that we look specifically at volunteers. And we're requesting that the board consider tonight that allowing volunteers who would show either proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test. We know that the Y is... the local community Y here is offering free COVID testing to anyone in the community. We're not talking about coming in for a meeting with a building principal or coming in for a meeting with a teacher. We are talking about people who come into the classroom. The most specific and recent upcoming example that I can give is people who are coming into elementary classrooms to facilitate craft projects and things that the kids engage in as part of their holiday celebration. So that is one of the changes that we are asking the board to vote on this evening. And the other change that we're asking the board to vote on this evening is looking at the language to reflect that free lunch is available through the federal lunch program for the remainder of the school year. So a couple of things that came up during our December 2 meeting. There was a question about the process that we use to identify and follow up on close contacts. So we have created since that time a close contact form that we're going to have that form available that parents, students can complete that, submit that, so that there would be consistent collection of information. That was something that people were criticizing, that there was not consistency in the way that we were collecting the information. Monitoring the mask-wearing, if masks are optional. And I already commented on that, about teachers and district personnel doing their best, keeping in mind that it would be an option then. And we were asked about the collection of vaccination data. We can collect it on a voluntary basis. Our folks in our technology office are ready to have that available for those who wish to share that information with us sometime during next week. Then we were also asked, does the Health Department have data about vaccination rates in the community by age? On the CDC website, Delaware County vaccination rate for those five and over is 71% fully vaccinated. At this time, my understanding is fully vaccinated is still two shots. I've not seen anything where it says fully vaccinated means you have to have a booster. But if someone has seen something else, I'm sure they'll share that with me. Students who participated in the clinic offered in our district will be fully vaccinated before we return in January from break. So they would not be in that count there because they wouldn't be in that category of fully vaccinated. We had our clinic Saturday. Then there was the clinic at Marple was just the week before. There was a clinic in Radnor. So within our area, there were opportunities for those who wish to have their children vaccinated. So I imagine that those percentages will increase over the next coming weeks. And then the question was, can we get vaccination rates of students and staff? And we know that over 90% of our staff have proof of vaccination. So then we took a look at... We've been consulting all throughout this with Dr. Rubin from CHOP, Dr. Brennan from Penn. And understandably, there's a period of time where they're both hesitant to have anything attributed to them because of the entity for which they are employed. So we went to the CHOP's Policy Lab, the blog that they put out. And one of our speakers referenced tonight, actually the same one that I'm referencing here, the December 9 blog. In there, Dr. Rubin specifically mentions, "By mid-January, we are likely to see more schools transition to mask optional policies." Some may be more immediate than others. But that was the time period that he believes we're going to see something like that. Continuing on that same blog, it says, "Most schools will likely choose a strategy dependent on community case incidents." Recognizing that transitioning to mask optional policies during higher substantial seasonal resurgence may force all recovery and inundate already depleted staff. As recent as yesterday, an article in the Philadelphia Inquirer, Dr. Rubin states that he would not advise stopping the masking until at least after the holidays. So one of our scenarios was to look at sometime the end of January or February, an approach that he predicted most areas suburban districts would take. Reading on, then he does identify the shift to mask optional policies may very well cause some anxiety for some. And as we listen, we hear from people who are in favor of masking students, people who are hopeful that we will move to a mask optional approach as soon as possible. It creates anxiety for everyone. But then he goes on to say, "The milestone of achieving the vaccine should not be understated." And that we should be doing everything possible to optimize those rates and increase those rates across our communities. And then again, as recent as yesterday, Dr. Brennan had an opinion piece in the Philadelphia Inquirer. And I only extrapolated a little piece of it. "Follow the current data and trends in the pandemic and make their decisions after the..." And he was referring to schools and local school districts make their decisions after the holiday wave has abated. So in summary, what are the changes that we're asking the board to consider this evening? The piece about the volunteers and the language to update and reflect the food availability throughout the school year. And then the changes that would be considered in January. And again, I'll go back to my opening statement. We want to... What additional information does the board want in consideration of these options? Or if there's another option that they want us to look into? Maintaining, revising the plan, considering masking optional when local data become available? Or revise the plan, making it optional at a particular point in time? But in no case would I say make it optional immediately. I mentioned on December 2 that the children in our district who participated in the clinic, and there were over 700 of them, will not be fully vaccinated until we return from the break. So I would not make a recommendation that we would make any change. And as we're seeing the numbers increase, we saw numbers spike right after Thanksgiving. I imagine we'll see that after the winter break as well. That's all I have.
All right. Do board members have questions or comments for Dr. Ruscie?
I have one question. Dr. Ruscie, regarding the local and township data that the Delaware County Health Department is collecting, you say that they're working with Chester County right now to figure out how to put that data into those sets. Will that be retroactive? Will we be able to see the rates for the past few months as well? So we can determine what kind of trends we have?
That I do not know. But thank you for your question. I do want to clarify, the Delaware County Board of Health, they are not functioning as a board of health as of yet. It will not be until January. That's the information that Dr. Brennan has shared, like some of the work that is going on now. And it's access that the epidemiologist in Delaware County has to, I guess, a counterpart in Chester County to look at how they work with that data and what is communicated out to the school districts.
Okay, thank you. I think it'd be interesting to see what trends were, especially after the recent vaccination clinics that we've had, to see kind of where we're heading at least.
Could I just ask everyone in the audience to please keep their masks up over their nose and mouth? Thank you.
Few questions, is that all right?
Yep. Related to what we're voting on tonight for volunteers, we did not specify if there's a particular COVID test that they have to take. Like, does it have to be a PCR test? Or can they take a rapid test? Does it matter?
They can take a rapid... We weren't going to specify exactly.
So as long as it was within the last 24 hours?
24 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Could it be one administered at home?
Administered at home.
You can go to CVS and get the over-the-counter tests? Is that adequate submission? Or do you want it to be at a clinic or a testing site?
Do we need to specify that in our... Like, do we just need to make a change just to specify?
That in there? Yeah.
Just to be clear?
Mm-hmm.
Related to the test to stay program, if we were to be mask optional, I appreciate that we can't have the teachers being responsible for overseeing that every child who should be wearing a mask is wearing a mask. But I'm also concerned that for test to stay students, if there's nobody supervising that they are wearing a mask and there's no penalty for not wearing a mask, I'm worried that it kind of erodes the efficacy of that program. So it's more of a comment, I guess, than anything else. I don't know. I'm just concerned about using all of these tests. But it seems like it's not a very effective policy if then students aren't wearing their masks or there's no way to enforce it. So I guess that's a concern that I have. And then related to getting a Department of Health, it's very exciting and I'm really looking forward to that. Will we get a chance to speak with the director or some other representative? Like, we used to have... Oh, now I can't think of her name. That was over a year ago. What was her name?
Jean Kazner.
That's right, yes, thank you. You know, she used to attend a few of our meetings on occasion. Will we get a chance to just speak with anybody? Is that a possibility? I'm sure they're going to be inundated, but...
I will make that inquiry.
Okay, thank you so much. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ruscie, for your presentation. I really appreciate everything that you've done to look into these issues. I also just really appreciate you bringing this in front of the board. I'm mindful of the three options that you presented us with. And it's interesting to me that every district in our Commonwealth has these three options, right? And I think that we're seeing unfold over the 500 districts in our Commonwealth, the different paths that each one has taken. And I think really easy decisions are, you know, we have a health and safety plan. We're going to continue with our health and safety plan. That wouldn't require any deliberation on our part. But it would also not maybe get us to a place where masks are optional in our schools. Another easy decision would to just say, you know, masks are optional and also would not require much deliberation if that's what we wanted to do. But it's not something that I think for us makes a lot of sense because what we want to do is... I'll speak for myself. What I want to do is to get to a place where masks are optional in our schools. But I want to get there using rational bases and having the confidence that we are not going to then start outbreaks in our schools and have our schools close because of this decision that we made. So like I said, I really appreciate you bringing this in front of the board because I think it's really important for us to be talking about in order to get to that place, which, like I said, I wish for our schools to be mask optional. But the information that we have here and the information that we have asked to gather from our future, just like Dr. Ruscie said, very exciting that we'll have our own health department, will help us make an informed decision, not just a decision based on, you know, I'm not sure what. But that's my goal for our board, is to be making informed decisions about this. And I'm not sure what other decisions we can make tonight about going mask optional because I think that we do need some of this information. I'm glad to see that we're going to start collecting on a voluntary basis our vaccinations in schools. I really encourage everyone in our community, if you haven't gotten vaccinated yet, to go out and get vaccinated, you, your child, five and up. And that hopefully our community can get to a place where we are unique in the way that we have less transmission. We have less just sickness from the virus because we have high vaccinations. So regarding what's on the agenda tonight, I really appreciate the opportunity for volunteers to start coming back into our schools. You know, it's something that I know a lot of parents really, really enjoy. I have enjoyed all of the time that I've gone into my daughter's classroom as a volunteer and to be able to have the processes in place for the parents in our community to continue to do that or do that again is very welcome. I would note that it's the exact same standard that we have for our staff. So it's just something that we would expect of the adults coming in our building. You know, I guess I'm not sure what else there is to say about the optional masking at this time. I do want to thank all of the community members who spoke tonight and who have been just giving us their thoughts. It is an important issue. And like I said at the beginning, we're looking at this because we want to try and find a way to have no COVID precautions. And so we're not looking at this to then just say we want to mask forever. We're looking at this for the opposite reason. So, you know, I appreciate everyone who's come forward and made comments. And I appreciate the board for taking a look at this, you know, at the health and safety plan again.
I had a couple of questions. In terms of what we're voting on tonight, in terms of requiring volunteers to our buildings to either submit their vaccination or proof of a negative COVID test, it might seem like a crazy question on the meaning of the word volunteer. But I remember a couple of years ago being involved with the PTO at Linwood when statewide clearances became the norm. We had many discussions on what is a volunteer? The classroom parent who is coming in multiple times a year? The art room helper who is in weekly versus the one-off person who does a mystery reader once and enters that on a one-time basis? Are we going anytime ever? We, at the time, were told, the Linwood PTO, which I would assume would be consistent throughout the district, that a volunteer would only be considered... If you were only coming into the school on a one-off occasion, you were not considered a volunteer and therefore did not have to have your statewide clearances submitted. Is that the same definition of volunteer here? Or is that...? I just wanted to clarify.
When you say coming in on a one-off...
So we would have... Let's say a parent came in for a mystery...
You're coming in to work in the party in the classroom?
We were told at the time that a volunteer was considered someone who was coming in multiple times. If a parent was coming in one day to help at the book fair once a year, that they weren't considered a volunteer and therefore did not have to have their clearances. I just wanted to be clear on the definition that you were using a volunteer. So if a parent was coming at any capacity, one time or as an art room helper weekly for the rest of the year, that would apply to...
Well, right now, that would. But we're not... You know, with this, it's not doors open, everybody coming in. They're still looking at limited...
They're still looking at, you know, limited volunteers coming into, into the classroom. And I would also say, Danielle, to point out, we can revise this as we, you know, as we get a couple of months into it, and we're looking at different data, and we decide, you know, that's not something we need, or we need it just for this particular group, we can come back and revise it then as well. This is looking, this really is coming from, how can we create some of the experiences that are so important to our kids and are really hard for teachers to recreate by themselves in the, in the classroom right now? That, that's where it's coming from.
And no, I can't say how grateful, as a parent of children in the district, to be able to help at the Halloween party was such a treat, and after missing out on that with my youngest last year. So, and I know that was the sentiment at Linwood when I was there, that people were thrilled to be able, at even some small capacity, to have a little bit of normalcy, and I think the kids loved it and the parents loved it, and the teachers appreciated the help as well. Um, I had another question, just in terms of masking optional, and forgive me if this has been discussed in the past, has any consideration ever been given for masking optional to children receiving hearing and speech services in school during the day? And letting them be mask optional during their?
That's typically worked out with the individual family, with, you know, with the staff in the building and what kind of accommodations, you know, can be made, and then, and an accommodation might be a different type of mask that a child is wearing, but that's usually like on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Um, I don't think it would revise the health, health and safety plan, um, in any way, but are there ways to incorporate more mask breaks throughout the day? Is that something that we could consider? I don't know if that's possible, um, but maybe?
Sure, I can ask the building principals about that. That would, yeah, you said, that wouldn't have to be?
It wouldn't be a health and safety plan, just thinking as we're going into colder, well, maybe not today, but someday we'll have colder weather.
Colder weather, yeah.
So?
Yep, I can ask the principals to talk with teachers.
There'll be maybe less recess or something, you know, so then, I mean, it is a long day to wear a mask, right?
Sure.
And I think we all know that. So if there, you know, if there are ways to incorporate more mask breaks, or even just water breaks, um, I know a lot of headaches are just because we're not drinking as much water as we used to because we're wearing masks, um, so maybe just taking a quick water break or something like that. Um, I think that might mitigate some of the problems that, you know, are, are related to masks. But I don't think, wouldn't revolve, involve a revision of the plan in any way, so, just a suggestion.
Dr. Rishi, I, I have a couple of questions regarding the volunteer change. I just want to make sure, if I understood you correctly, if a parent were coming into the building to meet with the principal, they would not be required to, uh, show proof of vaccination? They would be required to mask if we're operating on their masking. So this is, this would apply to, uh, folks that are coming in and will be in rooms with students?
Yes, correct.
I'm trying to get my arms around how we would manage tracking close contacts, quarantine, test to stay, monitoring who's, who's mask mandatory, who's not. And I'm, I'm guessing that, uh, having other districts who are going mask optional prior to us may provide us with some, uh, experience, and see what, what works and what doesn't work for them.
Yes.
Because I, I know that we don't have a lot of extra personnel sitting around to, to try and, and keep track of all this stuff.
Correct. Um, and we can ask, you know, in our neighboring districts, we can ask outside of our neighboring districts, um, you know, how things, how things are going in, in their schools. I, I also wouldn't, I think it's important for, and now I'm speaking to the school personnel, I think it's important for us to remember that as more people are vaccinated, the numbers that we're seeing now, who, who would be required, uh, and that monitoring of what's required will, will decrease. So I think just important, because I'm, I'm envisioning some staff people listening to this and saying, what? And thinking about, you know, I, I was, I mentioned, I was in a building this week where 10%, the contact tracing involved 10% of the stu, of the student body.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's, that's an enormous task, just to try and, you know, contact. Now, I mean, you can guess, it was one of the elementary buildings. So unfortunately, a lot of the children are not fully vaccinated yet, so that was, you know, an added layer onto it. So, you know, the hope is that as we get to a point where more are, that there will be less of that type of interaction.
You know, I know that we, we ran into issues with Chester County Health Department when they were ostensibly helping with contact tracing, um, and, uh, you know, once they stopped doing, doing that, uh, you know, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not an easy exercise. Uh, the, the nature of the, the whole, uh, context of the pandemic has been such that our administrators are stretched, um, and that, uh, it's, it's become more and more difficult to, uh, get additional personnel of any kind.
Yes.
One other thing, and this, I don't know if this is the appropriate time for me to raise this, but I was curious, you know, what the American Medical Association might have to say about the efficacy of public masking, um, because I, I usually try and rely on professionals regardless of what the area is that I'm interested in. My understanding is that the AMA now represents about 270,000 physicians nationally, um, and their statement is that public masking during the COVID-19 pandemic is one of the most effective measures we can take to contain the spread of the virus, and that they strongly advocate for coronavirus masking in public spaces. So, you know, this is not just some thing, some feel-good comfort thing that board members are interested in, and I just want to make that clear.
Related, I was interested similarly, and I looked at the, um, American Pediatric Association website, since we're talking about children, I was thinking about, like, what advice did I have, especially with the growing numbers that we're starting to see in our county? And it wasn't the exact same statement, but it was a very similar statement. So, um, I would encourage you to go to the, it's AAP, American Association of Pediatrics, um, and just see what information they have on their website, um, because I, I thought they had some good information and some good data. Thank you.
Again, the, the goal has been for the past 20 months and continues to be to protect the safety of our students, our families, and our staff, and, and to be conducting business in our buildings full-time. You know, that's, that's our North Star. So that, those are the things that help to guide our decisions.
I think, yeah, to that end, I appreciate all of the public comment, um, and emails that the, the board gets, and I know a lot of people are making compelling suggestions and, and things to look at. Many of those aspects, um, ventilation is one that comes to mind, while important and beneficial, aren't things that directly, um, necessarily like lead to these decisions about whether a student or has to quarantine after a close contact. Um, so I, I do appreciate that the board, um, and the, and the administration are focused on, um, helping us get to a plan that, um, is based on the best available information, the current conditions, and also is mindful of those things that we cannot change. We cannot change, um, the rules around, um, close contact tracing quarantine. We can't, um, avoid that, the possibility that cases would get to a number where we need to return to a virtual environment. So I, I do appreciate that. Um, I think the test to stay is a good addition to our toolkit. In a couple of places in the slide, you mentioned, um, like a supply chain or staffing issues. Is there a sense that there is some, um, capacity that we have for test to stay? And if we reach that capacity, um, how, you know, what would the, what would we do if test to stay, um, is kind of limited? Or let's say, um, in the high school, it, they have a capacity for 50 kids or people at, at a time, and the 51st person comes, are they required to quarantine at home because there is some limit? Is, is there any sense of, um, that either by supply chain or staff capacity?
The, um, supply chain is almost like a disclaimer, I'm sorry, to say that, you know, that we're just, like, as long as we, as long as we have this. So, thank you for the question. We have not been told, um, that we will not be able to have access to that. We have not been told that there's a limit to what CHOP can, can provide. When asked at our meeting last week, Dr. Rubin indicated they were even, they were, um, awaiting a shipment of a couple hundred thousand more, um, and not awaiting because there was a delay. They were just, you know, expecting that that was going to be, be arriving. So that's our, like, we don't want to get to a point where if there is a problem with it, where someone says, you said my child would be able to, and, uh, we, if we don't have it, we, we can't. And then we might look at, all right, if you can provide the, you know, the test, and we have to get into where that test would come from. Thank you. The staffing piece is, you know, it's just to get, again, the, the numbers, um, and the thing, you know, when people are doing test to stay, there's something else that they're not doing.
Dr. Rishi, can you clarify how the close contact form will be used?
How the, the close contact form will be, will be used? All right, so that form, um, can be, you, you can be asked, so you're, let's say you're building principal calls, your child has, you know, you say that your child, um, has tested positive for COVID, um, that they will ask you to complete that so that you can put in the information, my child was with so-and-so, these are the people that I know my child was, was with. That was the concern, that there was information that some parents would just email, and information that others would give a lot of, a lot of detail, uh, and how could we be more consistent in what we're collecting?
Okay. And so the collection of this data is then going back to the building principal?
Yeah. Or, or to the building, to the nurse, more than likely, uh, but the building principals are quasi-nurses in, in our schools right now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
It's not information that's going to teachers or to, like, to other staff members. It would be to, you know, it's health information to the, to the, that the nurses need.
Okay, so it's protected data, we don't have to worry about it being dispersed elsewhere?
Correct.
Sounds like there's no other comments or discussion at this time? When would we, um, plan to discuss it again? Will this be, uh, on an agenda in January?
Yeah, I was assuming that you would continue?
An ongoing discussion, yeah.
Discussion in, in January, if there's additional information that we can, that we can get. I think it's important to keep in mind, January 6th is our next meeting. I would not anticipate that we would have something from the Delaware County Health Department by January.
Right.
That's what I was just going to say. I don't know, I mean, we have the intervening break, and if, you know, if all goes well, they'll be up and running by then, right? But, um, you know, certainly up to the board president, um, you know, what, what goes on our agenda, but I'm, I'm sure the, the conversation can continue, but I don't know, you know, I guess I, I would understand if not that much more information can be presented to the board at that time, as we have tonight.
Thank you. So we are now up to the facilities and finance portion of the agenda. The first item is for informational purposes. It's the, um, financial statements as of October 21st. The next item is an action item to approve the budget transfers in the amount of $57,931.40.
Moved.
And this is a roll call vote?
Roll call.
Dr. Kersman?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Dr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Nogras?
Yes.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is for action to approve disbursements from the following funds as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is action to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders totaling a credit of $457.50 as listed.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The next action item is to approve a resolution appointing Kristen Larson to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing December 16th, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2023.
Kristen, move.
For a second.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Kristen, for serving on the DCIU Board of Directors.
It is a good service to us that she will attend two additional meetings and also, um, have an opportunity to engage with, um, districts from around, the 15 districts from around the county. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kristen. The next item is an action item to approve, uh, the proposal for CB Development Services, Inc., to provide owner's representation services for the construction and closeout phases of the Chatham Park and Cooper Town Elementary School's climate control project at a cost not to exceed $414,400.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, did any discussion? I just wanted to note that I did the kind of back-of-the-envelope calculation that this fee is 3.3% of the total bid budgeted amount of $12.5 million, and based on my experience with construction facility financing, that is, uh, a reasonable rate for this kind of extensive, um, owner's representation service that marshals the project through, so just wanted to add that context. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. The next item is for action to award the bids for the climate control project at Chatham Park Elementary as listed below, as recommended by owner's representative CB Development, Inc., contingent upon approval of bonds and insurance and subject to audit.
Move.
What's moved? Second.
Any discussion?
Just wanted to say, I'm very happy to see Chatham, and we come going out to bid. I know that my daughter, she, she went to Chatham, there was always a bit of a unofficial lottery. They would see which teacher they got and, and would wonder if the teacher had, whether you did free seed or not, and how hopeful they would be during the really fall and the spring, so, that's, that lottery will end, thankfully.
Everybody wins.
This is a, um, a nice opportunity to enhance the facility equity across our district. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, the item passes. The next action item is to award bids for climate control project at Cooper Town Elementary as listed as recommended by owner's representative CB Development, Inc., contingent upon approval of bonds and insurance and subject to audit.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Cooper Town's going to get HVAC too. The next action item is to approve the agreement between the school district of Haverford Township and CCRES to provide educational services, instructional services, and similar services on a regional basis at the request of SDHT.
Kristen, move.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to ask us for some context about this. I'd like to ask us for some context about this firm and what, what it means, regional basis for services. It's the CCRES?
Oh, okay.
Is it, is it, it noted one employee, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, affiliated with Chester County IU, but the services that they provide, we get instructional support personnel in some of our special education classrooms. There can also be administrative support. It tends to be almost like a substitute service, if you, you know, if you will, but they're not titled that way. And they can provide support for many different employees throughout the district. In this particular case, we are looking for some part-time administrative support that that would be, but the agreement is for all types of support.
And the agreement doesn't specify a total dollar amount or a partial dollar amount. Are the, the contractual rates similar to our pay scale, or how is that?
Actually, they would be, like, there's a pay rate for the, each of the different job classifications that we would be taking a look at, and they might appear to be a little bit higher than what we would be paying, but that's because they have their overhead fees.
Right, the service.
Not what the individual is receiving.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Sorry.
That's okay, go. The next action item is to authorize the administration to execute the release and settlement claim with the Hartford.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next action item is to approve the proposal for Deborah M. Crete Esquire to provide E-Rate Legal and Consulting Services for the 2022, 2022 funding year.
Kristen, move.
Second.
This one, so E-Rate is a program that we need to apply to get the benefit of. Again, this contract didn't have a specific dollar amount, had like a $2,000 or $2,500 fee per service. Is there a sense of, like, how many of these applications for a total exposure for this consultant that we have?
I, I apologize. You know, Ms. Q's absence this evening was unexpected, so I'm, I am sorry. I don't have that specific information in front of me. If you want, we can, we can hold off.
That's okay. I know the, I mean, the rates are listed, I just wasn't sure if this is something that we apply for five of them or 500.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Any other discussion?
Get that answer.
This wasn't talked about at the finance.
We did not talk about this at the finance committee. I'll ask to see if people are okay with accepting it as is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion passes. We are now into the human resources portion of the agenda. The first action item is to accept the following retirement and resignation as listed.
Kristen, move.
For a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next action item is to approve the following appointments as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome to the new appointments. Next item is to approve the following leave and rescind requests.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. We are now in the people's services portion of the agenda. We're flying now. The action item is to approve the following educational service contract for services provided to a student in the district.
King moved. Kristen, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. The next action item is to accept the recommendation of special counsel and authorize the resolution of pending special education administrative proceedings and authorize the administration to implement the terms of the resolutions as listed below.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Now we are in curriculum and instruction. First action item is to approve the high school course selection guide for the, I keep getting tongue-tied, 2022, 23 school year, as discussed at the curriculum committee meeting on November 22nd, 2021.
Kristen, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only that, I, I love going through the course offering because it always makes me wish that I was a student today. Because I think we have great courses, so, you know, thank you to our curriculum committee and to all of our administrators who helped put this together.
Thank you. And I will note that the course selection guide was discussed. Dr. Kirschman gave a report of the committee meeting, but we also discussed it at a board retreat that we held recently, and it was an example of the ways in which the district is bringing to life some components of our strategic plan, and the courses reflect an interest in having skilled contemporary citizens able to navigate complex thinking, digital access and challenges, creative content. And so they are good additions to the curriculum, and I think the high school students will have a hard time picking, you know, what to fill their blocks of time with. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The course selection passes. The next action item is to approve the middle school student educational excursions to Camp Canadensis, approximately 400 students per grade level as listed below. These trips will be contingent upon the guidelines outlined in our health and safety plan. A decision about whether these trips will move forward will be made on February 15th, 2022, the latest cancellation date allowed by the campsite. Families will be asked to make a non-refundable deposit after that date.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, when I was looking at the agenda this week, when I saw that, I can't even tell you how happy I was and what a big smile on my face when I saw it. Our children have undoubtedly lost so much over the last two years, and efforts of the district have just returned a little bit of normalcy to, to them. It's so greatly appreciated, and on a personal level, as a son, as a parent of a son who was in the fifth grade graduating class of 2020, those, that particular class, lost all their graduation activities. They lost Canadensis last year. So, I was beyond thrilled that we're at least trying to make this happen for all of those students. So, thank you.
As a Canadensis parent, shepherded one year. I can attest that it is a really delightful experience and really well-run, lots of activities. It's great to see the kids enjoy being in that environment and engaging with each other in a, in a, you know, off-site experience. I do, just wanted to ask what, what this means, that it's contingent on the guidelines in our health and safety plan, or those things that have been, like, we can understand what those contingencies are at this point, or is that something that will be linked to the health and safety plan closer to the event?
I see Jen nodding over there, but I'm not saying that right now, that as the current, as the health and safety plan is, but we're predominantly concerned if anything were to happen that we would, would not be able to have the students participate in the trip, that that would be reflected in our health and safety plan as well. Like, that would be one of the reasons that we're not having them do any overnight, overnight trips. So we just wanted to make sure that all bases were covered and we were able to get a complete refund is why, and that's why Mr. Haran looked into the dates so that funds would not be lost.
I appreciate that, yes. So that the idea is that the safety precautions that govern in our school setting would be applied?
Applied there as well.
Okay.
Yeah, but if, if the children go to, you know, Canadensis, and they're going as our school, and they're occupying those spaces during the day, they're still, their expectation is that they're following our health and safety plan, whatever it is at that point
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're hoping for Canadensis. The next action item is to approve the student educational excursions as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go team.
Go team. I will say, notes in the agenda that the girls are on Friday, three Fridays, and the boys were on two Saturdays, and I was initially like, "But why do the girls have to miss three days of school?" And then I looked at, and the track program on Friday night starts at 6:30, and two of the days are half-days, so it, it doesn't adversely impact their educational, you know, access to their classes. So I appreciated that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, track team. We are now on to the other items agenda, which is the action to approve revisions to the health and safety plan for the 2021, 22 school year to allow volunteers to provide either proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test to volunteer in schools, and to update the language to reflect that all students are eligible for free lunch through the federal lunch program through the 2021, 22 school year.
King moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to be sure that we were gonna update the language to make it clear that it can't be an at-home test, it has to be a test at a clinic.
Would that be the equivalent of like an administrative regulation, or, you know, just in practice? Or does it need to be into the, this approval action?
It doesn't need to be in the wording in the recommended action. It can go into the, the actual, you know, the plan.
For the implementation.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I do write that down.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The plan is amended. We are now at our second public comment session of the evening. There was one person who signed up, yep, Rich McGlory.
I guess I can't take this down the top, huh?
No.
Okay. We're gonna charge the top. I've got my second, my second mask here in case you can't hear me. I am Rich McGlory, and I live at 1246 Delode in Havertown. For those of you who don't know me, I am the proud parent of an eight-year-old autistic child at Manoa Elementary School, who is doing wonderful thanks to the awesome program we have at Manoa. Now, those, for the new members of the board and the student, I was formerly a teacher and a principal in Philadelphia School District for 34 years, and I wrote a book called, "Who's Who Is It?", the Democratic Imparta for our schools. So I come with you with background, but I come here today to just bring a message of joy. Okay? I didn't come here to speak about the COVID stuff, the masking, or anything of that nature. But for the board members that have been here, before we had the pandemic, I presented a article about the happier the kindergarteners of Finland who had the highest test scores. And they believe in not putting a lot of pressure on students to achieve at early levels, and they put joy in the curriculum. And I wanna tell you a little story about Manoa that brings joy, and hopefully we can end this meeting with a note of joy. Okay? Couple weeks ago, I had the privilege of taking boy Johnny to school every morning and picking him up every afternoon. So, I get to see the students interact as they wait with their parents. I get to see the students hug their parents goodbye, interact. I get to see the autistic children interact with the typical children with each other. I see their relationships grow. I receive, I see how Johnny interacts with, with children, and doesn't interact, and does his own thing. And a couple weeks ago, I said to Dr. Ramones, I don't know if he's still here or not, as he was directing traffic out there at the beginning, saying hello to us as we walked by, directing the traffic. I said, "You know something, Dr. Ramones? Schools are the greatest places in our world." I've gotten to know the parents, I've gotten to know the students, and let me tell you something, not only is Manoa a wonderful school, we got the greatest school community in the world. And I don't think that the other schools are different. And I want everybody to understand the importance of joy, especially at this time, and take a message of joy home with you of what I see with those children every day, mess or no mess.
Thank you.
They interact wonderfully. I've just got one little story that I have to tell you.
You're three minutes.
Just 30 seconds. I know. But as I was leaving just this morning, thinking about my speech, I was walking down the sidewalk, getting in my car, and this cute little girl, who I know because she says hello to Johnny some mornings as she's driving by, she doesn't know me from anybody other than I'm the one who brings her, uh, Johnny to school. And everybody down here knows me as Pop-Pop. She said hello to me this morning in such a charming, thrilling way to me. She just said hello. I walked past her.
Thank you.
And she wasn't saying hello to me, she was saying hello to Johnny's Pop-Pop. And that meant so much to her to say hello to me because of her relationship with Johnny. And that's the best part of my day, every day of my life, going to that school in the morning and picking my Johnny up every day and seeing the growth that Johnny has in the last two years, thanks to Manoa School Community.
Thank you.
And we all need to understand that. Thank you, have a great Christmas, and on that note, you know, we've been here late tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for the job you do.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks for sticking around for that. There's someone who said she signed up, but she wasn't on my list. I understand that there's a member in the audience who had intended to sign up, and we don't have them on the list at this time. We are not opening public comment. Please come up and talk to us afterwards. I don't receive the public comment emails directly, and yeah, I'm given a list from the administrative office. But please come up and talk to, talk to me afterwards. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is for our board reports. I will start down with Dave and work my way this way.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Rich, I guess, for that little message of joy. I think it's, well, what we've seen at, at, at this time of year, and I wanna be, you know, my first chance to publicly congratulate on your board members, look forward to working with all of you. I've been, having gone the past couple meetings, but, but it's thrilling to, to see you all here. I always think back to David Linwood, when we opened the time capsule, and we saw the old photos, the 1950s, where you saw nine, actually, you saw 10, nine, nine board members and attendants as, as. actually, you saw 10, nine, nine board members and attendants as, as all old white men. And now I'm looking down here and, hey, Larry. We're a super minority right now. I'm a colorblind too, no, we're a, we're a distinct minority, and I am actually happy about that. So welcome to the, the three of you, welcome back to Ms. Larson when she returns, hope she gets out of quarantine soon.
And Val pass.
Thank you. Dr. King?
I just want to say I'm excited to serve this board and serve this community. I had the pleasure of attending the Chesnoval Thanking Breakfast for teachers and staff during the week. And I am so tremendously appreciative of our teachers. They were there, excited to receive breakfast, but also just to say thank you for coming here to be with us. They enjoy each and every day seeing those students, they enjoy the work that they do. And I think that we should be proud of that and that in our township, that we have such great teachers that are, that are excited to see their students each day, excited to be in the building, excited to do what they love, and so, thank you.
Should I do it right now and interrupt the board reports? Dr. Kristen?
I want to echo the earlier thanks to all of the people who volunteered at the clinic. I was there with my kiddo. And it was, I mean, it was crowded, but in a good way. So there was a little bit of a wait, but it wasn't, it wasn't very long. But that was great. I was really glad to see that because that means that everybody is out there getting boosted, they're getting their five to 11-year-olds vaccinated, and it was just, it was really great to see. And all of that was done through volunteers from our community, so I really appreciate that a lot. I also wanted to thank everybody that has been sending us emails and who came here tonight to speak. I can't speak for everybody else, but I read all of my emails that I receive. And we get emails for masking, we get emails against masking. And I, I read all of them, so I appreciate it. I know it's coming from a place where we all love our children and we want what's best for our children. And so, thank you. I think it's really important that everybody is an engaged citizen, so, thank you.
So then I'll go to Antoinette.
Just really quick, I want to thank Ms. Wedeman for taking on the gavel as president with our first, you know, board meeting and for everything that you do to lead our ship and continue in the right direction, so, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale?
I just wanted to thank everyone for welcoming me to the board. And like Dr. King, I was able to participate in one of the breakfast for our staff at Manoa Elementary the other week. And it was great to get inside another building, see some of the teachers that were so appreciative, and we were able to thank them for all that they're doing to keep our children in school and to educate them. And it was such a nice experience and looking forward to the ones at Linwood and Haverford Middle School. New year coming.
Dr. King?
Yeah. Okay, sorry. No problem. I have had the opportunity to volunteer over the past nine months in multiple different vaccine clinics. And so I can speak to the wonderful organization when I volunteered at Linwood both of the days. I was very, very impressed with all of the volunteers and the staff and how smooth and well-organized it was. It's incredible to think about 1,200 people in such a short period of time in a small space, how quick and the flow was so, so well-done. Also, I want to just thank our amazing music teachers and their ability to continue to teach music through online learning over the past year and be able to work towards having in-person concerts again. I had the great opportunity to be at both the middle school band and orchestra concert as well as the high school one last night, and it was fantastic. Both of them were just really phenomenal and so well-done, and just really grateful to all of our music teachers as well as the staff that made that a possibility.
Thank you. Mr. Feinberg?
I want to thank Dr. Roushi and our other administrators for continuing to work on the health and safety plan. I think the process has been a good one, it's been thorough, and there's opportunity for the board to have significant input and also, as we heard tonight, for the community to have significant input. Thank you for that. Had an opportunity to attend a couple of the staff breakfasts at Chatham and Chesnoval, and as some of the other board members have said, it's just, it's great to interact with the teachers. They're, they've been pretty happy and it's, it's just a, a nice event, so I'm glad we're doing that. And basically, I hope everybody has happy and healthy holidays. That's it.
All right. I'm going to start with a comment that here near the sad anniversary of the tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary, please talk to your kids about the dangers of these TikTok challenges that are putting a scare in everybody. We need to keep our schools safe and encourage kids to have proper behavior online and that they understand the consequences of threatening our schools and students and damaging our schools. For folks who are being vigilant, thank you, and continue to report safety concerns to our school staff or through Safe, through Safe to Say. I also got to go to some of the staff appreciation breakfasts, and it was fun to say thank you by serving out bacon and hash browns and, and things like that. I think it was a treat for the family, for the staff, but definitely, you know, for me to get to be there and see the, the surprise that they had that they were getting a nice warm-serve breakfast that was prepared by our food service chartwells, and they did an excellent job catering these really tasty things. I also volunteered at the impressive operation that was our second vaccine clinic at Linwood. Saw the fabulous organization and the support from many of our staff and all the volunteers and just how appreciative that the community was to have this access so conveniently in our neighborhood. Everybody was so appreciative and joyful. I know Nicole Battistelli talked about what a great environment it was for the first clinic, and I wasn't able to volunteer that day, so I signed up for the second one, and was so glad that I did. And kudos to the school district for being able to pull that off. And I just wanted to conclude with, I hope everyone enjoys a winter break that has some fun and festivity and also some calm and quiet and that we have good health and good cheer to carry us into the new year. I am going to go back to an item on the agenda. We had somebody sign up after the cutoff time but has patiently waited to be able to give a comment to the board, and so we will honor that. If you could come to the podium and state your name and confirm that you're a resident and give us your comment.
I appreciate that, thank you. My name's Alicia Sturvikov, and I am a resident of Haverford. I'm not going to be redundant because I know we're all tired, everybody wants to go home. We all had a long day, and we're going to have a long day tomorrow. Also, I think the parents that came before me did an amazing job, you know, that spoke before me probably better than I could have, going over every single point that could have possibly been made on why masking, in my researched opinion, is absolutely more harming than benefiting our children. So I want to speak on a personal level. I'm a mom of an 11-year-old. She has ADHD, she has sensory processing disorder, she has severe anxiety, and she has an IEP for learning disability and challenges. So she struggled from day one with wearing a mask, as you can imagine. Since returning to school, she has been teased by her classmates over it and even shamed by adults. Yes, adults in the school. One example was her being scolded by another staff member in front of all of her classmates over the type of mask she was wearing. More specifically, it was a mask that had like a little plastic valve that was actually more decorative in nature. It had nothing to do with respiratory or breathing, but my daughter didn't know that, and it was more so like a way for her to ease her anxiety. Kindled a little white lie, and in her mind, she thought she was breathing better in it, therefore it lowered her anxiety. But this adult in question did not know that and shamed her. And as a result of that, she ended up getting teased really bad on the playground later that day. Another example was her one-on-one, told her that if she doesn't wear her mask correctly, that she's going to kill people, which caused her severe anxiety. She went home, was crying about it, like, that's not okay. Neither one of these situations is okay. These adults aren't experts, and neither is any of you. So I'm going to implore you to provide burden of, in other words, burden of proof. Like, tell us why, tell us, parents, why masking work and they're actually beneficial for our children as opposed to more harmful. You know, I think it's up to you to provide proof to the parents that masks are working and beneficial. Now that it's no longer legal to enforce mask-wearing in schools, I vote for parent choice. And I strongly urge for you to do the same. I urge you to stop using our children, I feel like they're being used as political, like, weapons, and they're turning them into potential, like, threats against the adults as proof of some of the examples I use. There's 1,200-plus kids with IEPs, you know, in the school district, so imagine this being repeated over and over again. So I am urging you to please put it in the hands of the parents and allow it to be choice. Yes, consider everything that you did, I think there are great points that you made, but ultimately, I think it should be in the hands of the parents to decide whether or not their kids are going to go in and wear a mask or not.
Thank you.
And that's all, thank you.
The next item is about executive session, which we did not have tonight. So we are up to the adjournment. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held January 6th, 2022 at 7:30 PM in the auditorium at Haverford High School, we're returning to the high school. And now I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.